We're about ready to get back underway. We're just waiting for Trustee Wong to join via teleconference. We're trying to sort out some technical difficulties. Okay, we're ready to get back underway with the regularly scheduled board meeting for February 8th at 6:42 PM. We're going to start with roll call. Trustee Wong is here on teleconference. Go ahead and say hello, Trustee Wong.
Present.
There we go. Trustee Venegas.
Present.
Student Board Member Anna Maxwell. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
And I too am present. And President Coffey is on an excused absence. Let's see. Items discussed in closed session. Government Code Section 54956 dot 9D2 pending or potential litigation. There was a vote taken and it was 4-0. Conference with labor negotiators. Government Code Section 54957.6 WSTA CSEA management. Information received. Number three, Government Code Section 54957. Public employee discipline dismissal release. Information received. And now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Doug Knapp. Okay. So now we're on to approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or remove or remove from the agenda? Anyone? No? Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
I second.
I second.
Motion by Trustee Venegas, seconded by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Will go to a roll call vote because of the Trustee Wong being teleconference. Everything will be done by a roll call vote. Student Board Member Maxwell. Yes. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Venegas.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Communications and celebrations, there are none. Student Board Member Report and Association Report. We'll go to the Student Board Member Anna Maxwell from Washington Middle College. Go ahead, Anna.
Hello and good evening. My name is Anna Maxwell and we are on to present the Student Board Member Report. Starting at Bridgeway Island School, their eighth graders had a fantastic time at Wonder Valley last week. It would like to thank all of the parent chaperones who made the trip possible. Additionally, over 80 BWI students participated in the Crest Quest last Saturday. Ms. Bowling, Mr. Mejia, and Ms. Peterson hosted a weekly Crest STEM Club for over 100 students on campus. These students participate in hands-on STEM projects and work in teams to prepare for competitions. Next up at Riverbank School, 43 eighth grade students attended Wonder Valley and had a great time. Meanwhile, Riverbank is partnering with the Yellow County Office of Equity, Division, and Inclusion, and Community Schools to put on their second annual girls workshop, How Many Ways to Love Me, on February 13th. They are also preparing for their first career fair in March 5th. An important thing to note is that they are still looking for community partners to present about their careers from 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM. At Elkhorn Village School, their Mesa students have been preparing for their competition in March. Their eighth grade students also visited Wonder Valley. Meanwhile, their students in kindergarten celebrated their 100th day at school, while their first grader celebrated their 101st day at school. Onto the Southport Ducks. They would like to congratulate their fourth and fifth grade spelling bee winners, which is seen below in the image below all the text. They would also like to thank Board Trustee Wong for joining as a special guest. Now onto Stonegate where science has been coming alive. Dr. Banks, a parent volunteer and garden docent, has been helping the fourth grade students make connections between Amplify Science Unit, Vision and Light, as it connects to the ecosystem in their very own school garden. They also hosted their Mad Science Night 2, sponsored by SGPTO, which offers students and families an opportunity to engage in hands-on experiments. Another interesting detail of said Mad Science Night is their kindergarten students making real snowmen made out of ice spheres. Now onto Westmore Oaks School. They celebrated their 100 days of school on January 3rd or 1st by dressing up. Meanwhile, their classrooms are creating Black History Month trifle displays to showcase Black history and to learn the importance of celebrating Black History Month as well. Now on to the Westfield Village Wildcats. Their eighth graders also visited Wonder Valley and they started their very first Girl Scout troop thanks to Community Schools. In the images displayed, you can see their two attendance raffle winners. These students both having had great attendance in the last month. At the Washington Unified Virtual Academy, they are celebrating their eye-ready reading growth, which shows a growth percentage of 107% of their year-end reading growth goal. This means that more than half of their students have already met their end-of-the-year growth goals. Additionally, the Washington Unified Virtual Academy students also got to visit campus twice this month. Their first visit being on February 1st for a whole school in-person day and their second visit being on February 7th, also known as STEAM Day, which showcased Lego Robotics in person, Hand of Art, coding, and virtual astronomy. Then, at Washington Adult School, their adult learners class attend class weekly to improve their English as a second language skill at Yolo Education Center and Elkhorn Village Elementary. Their students continue to work hard to get their credits on time to be able to receive their high school diploma by the end of the year. Another example of the Washington Adult School serving the diverse population at West Sacramento. Then, at Yolo High School, they had a very successful back-to-school night and also a successful startup where the students get to meet with the representative from Saks City College every Wednesday. The student leadership is also planning a Valentine's themed event. Now, at River City High School, River City celebrated their winter homecoming this past week and would like to thank Dr. Hildreth for joining them for their staff dance. In the images displayed, you can see their rally and you can also see the River City Leadership Class. And finally, at my very own Washington Middle College High School, leadership is getting ready for our always and forever Valentine's themed Spirit Week, which showcases grams and a week full of days that include both dress-up days and interactive activities. We would also like to congratulate freshman Jesslyn who made the varsity softball team at River City. And finally, for our final bullet points, we are also celebrating our wonderful six-year WASC accreditation. Thank you for listening.
Anna, as always, as a student board member, you're welcome to stay and vote on the items and give your input if you so choose. You do not, you've got homework to do, we understand completely. Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on now to WSTA report. President Doug Knapp.
President Knapp, your microphone's not on. Thank you.
Hello? Better? Well, no wonder nobody laughed at my joke. I'm just gonna go with that. And good evening, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet. It's good to see you once again. I want to start out by celebrating a meeting I had today with Autry Streak and, I'm sorry, June Flores regarding Community Schools and looking at drafting a resolution in the district. It was a really productive meeting and I think it was reflective of the way Community Schools is supposed to work. But I also want to thank Dr. Mascareñas for her support in doing work that she wasn't even really hired to do when she got here. And she took it on and really appreciate that. We're really appreciative of her work and we're glad to see now that June Flores is doing that work as well. I was, this is just kind of a general ask because I think, I talked to you guys about, a lot about making sure that our policies are deliberate and that we're continuing to look at things as technology changes. And I think that it's probably time to look into our cellphone policy again and look at best practices. It is, as we know, a controversial issue that, that, there's no shortage of opinions about cellphone policy, including opinions of teachers, parents, students. But I think we can all agree that cellphones have an enormous amount of potential and power for education, but they can also be an enormous distraction. And over the past couple of years with our cellphone policy, we've seen, not our policy, but with cellphones, we've seen detrimental bullying of students. We've seen targeting of teachers on multiple occasions at several sites that I've had to deal with. And we've seen instruction interrupted. The reason I'm bringing this up right now is that as you look across the nation, we're seeing innovative solutions to these issues in districts. And these solutions are taken into account considering lots of dynamic things, right? That sometimes students need cellphones for 504 plans. Sometimes students need cellphones for research. Parents feel comfortable with their kids having cellphones in case of an emergency or a lockdown. There's, there's a lot of moving pieces here. But we are seeing an escalation right now in our district of cellphone issues and I think we need to look at best practices moving forward. So I'm going to ask us to look at that. I just wanna, just because I'm knocking on wood and that it keeps going, that we, that we can celebrate continued bargaining success moving forward, working with our IBB process. And again, I want to reiterate everybody for their good intentions in the IBP process. I want to thank the board members who were able to attend the IBB meeting. Put a pin in that because I'm going to come back to ask the board to attend other things. I also wanted to thank, this is just kind of a nice, I'm just thanking people. I wanted to thank Matt Ainsworth and Carla Salvo. They're starting to work on the SPED task force. And we had a really, I'm going to look back there because I know Carla's here. We had a really fantastic dialogue last week and I'm really looking forward to getting that work started. Again, this is a complicated issue because not only is SPED really impacted across the state and I think some people don't recognize that these are issues everybody is facing, but it is also complicated in the fact that if you want to hear the voices of SPED, you have to hear so many different voices because SPED is diverse. Not only in looking at the needs and issues that our students face, but also in our professional groups. We have, we have RSP teachers. We have SLP, speech and language pathologists. We have SDC teachers. We have so many areas of SPED. So as Ms. Salvo and Mr. Ainsworth and I were talking about, you have to be really careful in being deliberate in planning this so that all voices are heard equally, but we can hear the distinct issues for every voice. So we're really looking at that and I'm really anxious to move forward with that process. And then this is the last one. This is the ask. I'm really hoping, because we've had so many issues with making sure that Community Schools started on the right foot. And this is not unique. Every district has this issue. It's a whole new, it's a whole new setup of funding. It's a whole new way to look at schools. But I would like to personally invite board members to attend a steering committee meeting. And I know you guys are super busy with your own stuff and even though you guys are compensated enormously for your work on the board, just kidding. That's, that's not true, by the way. I would love for you all, I'd love to invite you all to be at a steering committee meeting, to see where we're at and where we're going. I think it would be also helpful as we try and pass a resolution of the board to kind of have that kind of background. And I know it's amazing, I'm going to say this, I'm done. That's it for the night. Thank you.
President Knapp, can you quickly tell us when those are? Because that's helpful.
Well, we kind of actually had a conversation about that today. I think the next, even though it's not on the books yet, but I think the next steering committee meeting is going to be on the 26th of February. That's going to be, just so you know, that one might not be as structured as others because we are going to be diving into this possible resolution. We want all community partners, families, CSEA, teachers, students to have the opportunity to have input in this resolution. And so it's going to be kind of introducing everybody to that process. Following that, the next meeting, I believe, is on the 22nd of April, 25th of April. Like, I was impressed with myself for not looking at my calendar. 25th of March, I was on the wrong date and the wrong month, but now you know, the 25th of March. And hopefully we'll be in a place to recommend a resolution to the school board at that meeting. So look at the 26th of February and the 25th of March.
And are these just in person or virtual as well?
They are in person, but it's important enough for you to be there if we need to create a virtual link. I think that that's something that we can do. But I think one of the things I really want everybody to see is how important it is that we bring families and community members in here and how difficult that challenge is. And actually, I promised I was going to be short tonight, but you're asking me such good questions. I'm excited about the board being involved in the sense that, that you have your direct conduance to the community. Because our board is representative of areas. So my hope is that having board members understand the process a little bit more and be involved, we might be able to recruit the board to help us recruit parents. Because to me, we're asking, we're trying to reinvent schools and areas that have needed an innovative approach to education for a long time. These have been schools for improvement and everybody from the federal government to the state, to the school district have told these schools what they need to do to be better. But nobody's ever asked the families. This is our opportunity to ask the families what they need for their children to succeed. I think that's the only way you can do it. But see, I don't have access to these community members and sometimes our steering committee members don't have direct access to these community members. I'm hoping the school board can help us with that because you were elected because you're from these communities and maybe you can help us hear those voices because honestly, they're more, I shouldn't say this, I'm going to get in trouble. They're more important than the teachers' voices. They're more important than the administrators' voices because they're the voices of the students we're trying to reach and the families of those students we're trying to reach. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the CSEA report. Is there anybody here from CSEA that would be pushing to give a report? No? All right. Moving on to public comment. Let me first read our disclaimer on public comment before we go forward. At our regularly-held board meeting on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comment received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board and read into the record during the meeting, but not read into the record during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of the board agenda during the meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for the public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit, or item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's rights to privacy and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that a negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this. And with that, Mario, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have four general public comment requests. The first speaker is Becky Nyberg.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Hildreth, school board, administrators, and all of the Washington Unified staff here. My name's Becky Nyberg and I've been in the district for 30 years. I've taught first grade, ELD, and kindergarten. I've taught at Evergreen, Southport, and Stonegate. My sons also were educated in Washington Unified and went to Westmore Oaks, Stonegate, and River City. They all had amazing teachers. The teachers at my school are amazing. I love my job. I love my families. I love my students. I live in this community. I love this community. I love my administrators. They work hard. In, in general, every administrator I've ever had has been supportive of me and left me alone and let me teach and do what I know is right for kids. I'm here to talk to you tonight because I'm concerned that many of our less senior teachers who might be on the fence about whether or not they're going to stay in a district that doesn't value benefits and salary. I'm worried that those teachers that we've invested training in, BITSA, mentorship, co-teaching with them, I'm afraid they're going to take their skills somewhere else. Because if I was a new teacher right now, I would be looking at my, my pocketbook and what my benefits are. I have Kaiser and, you know, I'm okay with paying my fair share, but my, my fair share went from $0 to $189 a month. Now luckily, my boys are still on their dad's insurance. If I were to have to provide for their insurance, I would say, sorry, go to the free clinic at college because there is no, I, I personally can't afford another raise in my benefits. Now I have retirement on the horizon, so I'm not going anywhere. But if I didn't, I might be looking to see where I could make $500 to $1,000 more dollars a month as a single person providing for myself. What I want to impress upon you is what makes a good school, what makes community schools, is longevity. People who are invested in being in Washington Unified, who know the community, who love what they do. And that's only going to happen if we're competitive in salary and benefits and we value teachers and give them what they need to be able to do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nyberg.
Our next public speaker is Stephen Weiss.
Good to see you again. Good evening, everyone. Based on Becky's comments from personal experience, I worked at Costco for 10 years and-
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Just add that right there, 3:54.
There you go.
Do you mind just starting over?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can you, can you raise your podium or make sure the light turned on there so we can? Just make it really annoying for the next person to- All right, no, no. Wait 30 seconds, that's as high as it goes. Good, Mario? Okay. So based on what Becky said, just a point, I worked at Costco for 10 years and one of the reasons they're so successful is because they retain employees. They have a bonus to help for longevity. So I just want to point that out. That is part of the reason that makes them so successful in the retail world. But anyways, I'm reading this based on behalf of another member that wasn't able to be here tonight. You've already heard my personal experiences, so that's, that's not different. This is from another member who's not with us here tonight. Dear esteemed members of Washington Unified School District's Board of Education, I trust this message finds you well. I am writing to bring to your attention to two matters of utmost concern within our educational community. The certificated employee salary and the increase to employee benefit costs. As an engaged, well-respected member of this community, I feel compelled to highlight the potential adverse effects such a decision might have on our dedicated educators and staff. Our educators are the backbone of our school district and any decision affecting the financial well-being warrants careful consideration. It is crucial to acknowledge the possible negative impact that an increase in employee costs could have on the morale, job satisfaction, and overall commitment to our invaluable workforce. I am currently, so again, on behalf of the member, I am currently at step two of Group 5 in the salary schedule, earning $5,400 monthly. After deductions, my net income is $3,650.20. With a $2,200 rent for a one-bedroom apartment in West Sacramento, I'm left with $1,450 for essentials. Facing anxiety, panic disorder, depression, and PTSD, Kaiser Permanente's health coverage is insufficient. My mental health expenses are not covered. My mental health expenses are not covered. After health expenses, I have around $600 remaining for groceries, gas, pet costs, other personal expenses, and classroom supplies. This highlights the financial strain many educators face, and I urge consideration during discussions on benefit costs and certificated salary. Recognizing the fiscal challenges faced by the district, I implore the board to engage in a thorough exploration of alternative solutions that can uphold the financial stability of our educational community without placing an undue burden on our educators. Collaborative efforts between the board and employees may yield innovative strategies for managing costs while preserving the crucial support system that employee benefits and salary provide. By addressing this issue with open dialogue and a commitment to finding creative solutions, we can collectively ensure the continued success and prosperity of our educational community. I appreciate your attention to this matter and trust that together, we can navigate these challenges with the best interest of our educators and students at heart. That was the end of that comment. And I just want to end on a hopeful and positive note. Last time when I shared the employee benefit cost increases, Ms. Stovall emailed me that night at the board meeting to get a copy of that. That was encouraging for me, so I thanked her in the email, but I'll thank you publicly for doing that. That alone encourages me, and I hope we can build upon it because negotiations are ongoing. So thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wees. Mario?
Our third general public comment request is from Pat Flint, and then we have Danny Langford.
Pat, you may have to move the podium down.
See how low it'll go. Getting old and rickety here. First of all, I'd like to thank Sarah for alerting me on the special board meeting that you had. I appreciate that. I wasn't about to go out in the storm, but I understand that you carried on even in the dark, which you shouldn't have. You shouldn't even have had to gone out during that bad weather and the storm. Should have been delayed a day, and I know you were on a tight timeline that the city pressured you into doing, and that I believe one of the subjects on that agenda should have been tabled until this public meeting tonight, and that was the state budget explanation or comments or presentation that Monique did. We have a right to see that. When you don't have electricity, you can't even record the meeting. I'd like to see that brought back at a meeting and have you discuss in open public session what the budget cuts are going to do to this district and what may need to be done next year. Because these people sitting out here in the audience that teach our children every day need a heads up. If they're not going to have a job next year, they need to start planning now. And I don't know, March 15th, I believe, used to be the date that you had to notify these people. They can't wait till the last minute to have these budget cuts affect their job. And so I'm asking that that presentation be brought back, that you have an open public discussion about it and how it's going to affect Washington Unified School District. And again, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, board members, for going out in that awful weather when tree limbs were falling, electricity was out. You shouldn't have had. So please bring back the budget to where it's not going to be a last-minute thing where you have to make a decision that night. Bring it back for a full-on discussion, including the public. And is this meeting being livestreamed, or does it just only show tomorrow or the next day when you put it on YouTube?
There's a lot, oh. There is a livestream link on our webpage that is run by the city. Sorry, I just reacted.
That's okay. Just make sure there's a link somewhere that's easy to get. Old people have trouble with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Just to be clear, there was no cuts discussed at that meeting. So, but thank you, your point was well taken.
I want to start off by saying that student board member did an excellent job, one of the best I've seen. My husband recently brought up in a Measure V meeting that if you're teleconferencing in, he looked it up in the law, you're teleconferencing in that you have to post the agenda on the door of the room that Jackie would be at 24 hours in advance. I'd like a stamped picture of that agenda that's been posted. If it hasn't been, then I'm sorry, she can't participate. That's the law. And I'm a stickler for the law. You all are holding far too many special meetings. Pat hinged on it a little bit, but the fact that you held the Bright Park issue and went into the letter of intent with the school or the city with no public input, no public meetings, is very disturbing. That's not being transparent at all. And the fact state budget issues with possible cuts, which I know you didn't discuss, but frankly, when the power went out, that meeting should have ended. It used to be in board policy that that happened. I don't know if board policy is still the same on that. Plus, how can any of you read through 59 pages of a document for such an important issue in 24 hours? I doubt that it could happen. That item needs to be at a regular meeting. The Bright Park issue, have you even gone through the proper channels to consider that surplus property? There's a whole litany of things that have to be done before that can be done. Also, those meetings need to be recorded, and it's my understanding they are not videotaped. They used to be, and that's why we used to always have it in Room 75 so that it could be recorded. Another thing, when are we going to get higher an athletic director and a leadership teacher at our high school? You have two VPs filling those positions. How can they effectively do their jobs in either one? It's my understanding, as a Division One school, that we've had no representation for our athletics in the league meetings in the last two years. That's not acceptable. We also need trainers. That's a part-time position. I'm sure we've got COVID money that could cover it that we haven't spent yet, but we need trainers at every athletic event. We have, that's student safety issues. We have students that get hurt, and all they can do is provide them with some ice and help them get to the car. But a coach has to step away from his team and leave one coach in charge of whatever it is, 20 students, however. That's not fair to the students, it's not fair to the staff. We need an athletic director, we need a leadership teacher. VPs cannot be covering both those things. And I agree with the teachers, they deserve better. They directly impact our children every single day. Our top staff is not directly impacting our students, and we're very top-heavy in this administration. Thank you.
All right, moving on to M public hearings. I'm gabbling in, the public hearing for grade six through eight adoption of Desmos Math, Matt Ainsworth, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Professional Learning, and Autry Streek, Strategic Educational Services.
Good evening, Vice President Pizzotti, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet. On spring of 2023, middle school pilot teachers selected programs to pilot for the 2324 school year. The pilot teachers received training, collaborated during workshops, and discussed the program's benefits and challenges before making a recommendation to Curriculum Council. At the January 30th, 2024 Curriculum Council meeting, the council recommended moving forward with the 6-8 Math Pilot Teachers' Recommendation of Desmos Math as the middle school math curriculum adoption, beginning in the 2425 school year for a total of six years. Staff is requesting the school board hold a public hearing tonight regarding this proposed adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Is there any questions from the board? There's a comment from Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
I wanted to share that President Coffey. President Coffey and I attended this Curriculum Council meeting, and it was a really robust presentation. It was really well done by math teachers across our district who came together and shared this curriculum and the process that they went through, and it was really impressive. And there was a lot of excitement, I think, in the room, would be fair to say, about what this could mean for their students and how this will help them access the math curriculum. And it was a good discussion, and everyone was well in support. And so I just wanted to share that with the team.
Thank you. With no further comments, that public hearing is dispensed with. Public hearing number two, Transitional Kindergarten Curriculum, Scholastic Pre-K on My Way, Matt Ainsworth, Curriculum, and, well, you're not Autry. And Rahale.
Good evening again. During the 2223 school year, Transitional Kindergarten teachers piloted two programs. The pilot teachers received training, collaborated during workshops, and discussed the program's benefits and challenges before making a recommendation to Curriculum Council. At the January 30th, 2024 Curriculum Council meeting, the council recommended moving forward with the TK Pilot Teachers' Recommendation of Scholastic Pre-K on My Way as the TK Curriculum Adoption, beginning in the 2425 school year for a total of five years. Staff is requesting the school board hold a public hearing tonight regarding this proposed adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No public comments.
Is there any board comment? And Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
This is, oh, sorry, mic's going on and off. This was also on the Curriculum Council, and I thought was an exciting curriculum for our kids. And one thing that was also shared by Rahale that I really appreciate, I think our families will too, is that you also purchase the Scholastic magazines that can go home, and those are really accessible for families to read with their kids at home, too. So I think it looks like a really robust curriculum and will be really good for our kids.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is dispensed with. Now on to N1, information discussion items, the presentation of non-approved or non-voter approved debt by Monique Stovall, Chief Business Officer.
Just sure everyone's ready. Good evening. I'm joined by our financial advisor, Blake Beam, to provide an update and overview on our non-voter approved debt, including our certificates of participation. In our November meeting, we provided an update on our voter approved debt, our general obligation bonds, and now we're here to provide, as I said, an overview of our non-voter debt.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back. I'm going to go ahead and mess with this. It looks so fun for everybody else. So I think that there was some board discussion and maybe even some public comment following the last presentation, which focused on general obligation bonds to bring back more information specific to non-voter approved debt, which really is comprised of a variety of different lease financing type transactions, which again are non-voter approved and are ultimately backed by the district's general fund. And so tonight, we have a general overview of those items, again, for information, and I'm happy to answer questions either along the way or at the end. So, non-voter approved debt is an alternative financing option that many school districts will utilize to finance capital facility projects, but don't go out to the electorate to seek out approval, and they are not on the property tax bill for repayment. This is ultimately repaid by a dedicated source of facilities revenues that come into the district, with the general fund being the ultimate backstop. Over the years, Washington Unified has sold five different series of non-voter approved debt going back to 2007, at which time over $70 million was sold. And we're going to tie all of these different issuance of debt to specific projects of what they were directed towards. I'm sure that would be of interest to the board and community. So again, those bonds were originally sold in 2007. They were refinanced at a lower borrowing cost in 2017. The original net interest rate for the 2007 COPs, our certificates of participation, was 4%. Then again, in 2010, the district sold, actually took advantage of a federally subsidized program and sold qualified school construction bonds as this lease format of non-voter approved debt. The net interest rate after federal subsidy for those bonds was 1.42%, so very low. We'll go into more details of that particular issuance at a later slide. And the district sold just under $9 million in that case. Another important part is the column to the far right. With these lease financing, there's a pledged district asset each time the district sells these bonds. So you can see in 2007, it was Bridgeway Island Elementary. 2010, Stonegate. In 2012, the district again took advantage of a federally subsidized program, issued clean renewable energy bonds, or CREBS, in the amount of just over 7.3 million. The net interest rate after federal subsidy was just over 2%, 2.08%. And in that case, South Point Elementary was the pledged school site. And then, oh, sorry, Southport, sorry. In 2014, the district again sold lease financing debt, just over $6 million. There was no federal subsidy here. These are the more traditional certificates of participation, which school districts across the state utilize. Those bonds had Bridgeway again as the lease asset. And then the 2017 refunding certificates of participation, which I mentioned earlier, did refinance the 2007 COPs. The amount sold was 63.8 million, which was the outstanding balance of the 2007 COPs at the time those bonds were refinanced. The interest rate on those was 2.82%. And River City High School was the pledged asset. Of all of these outstanding series of general fund or non-voter approved debt, the principal balance or outstanding loan balance for all of these bonds is 63,066,666. Or 63,660,503. So just diving into each one of these in a little bit more detail. I don't have a breakout slide for the 2007, given that they were refinanced and there's no debt outstanding there, so just jumping ahead to the 2010 qualified school construction bonds. The federal subsidy was authorized through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, which allowed qualified issuers to receive either a tax credit or direct pay federal subsidy, in Washington Unified's case, it's a tax credit, for the rehabilitation, repair, and equipping of schools. So that 8.885 million was sold, and through that issuance, the federal subsidy offered was 5.83%, leaving a net interest cost of 1.42%. Those bonds were sold as a direct negotiation with JP Morgan Chase that purchased those bonds. And the district has been making payments since 2011 at the initial debt service payment date. Now, as the principal is being paid, those funds are being held in a separate account that has been accruing, and that balance will be paid off in full in March of 2026 when the qualified school construction bonds mature. Within that account currently is 7.22 million. So that is, I think, a reasonable consideration of an offset on that outstanding balance that I mentioned previously, to reduce that amount by the 7.22%. And I'll reiterate what that amount is by the time I wrap up the report. And as shown on the table here, the final debt service payment for the 2010 lease is March 15th, 2026, and that will And that will equate to the full repayment of the loan. And then next is in 2012, again, a federally subsidized program, clean renewable energy bonds is a, again, a tax credit bond that allows qualified issuers to finance certain renewable energy projects and corresponding facilities at a subsidized cost. So in October of 2012, the district sold just over 7.3 million at an interest rate of 5.09. However, after the federal subsidy, the net effective interest rate is 2.08% as shared on that initial slide. There's just over 3 million outstanding in principle for those bonds, which have a final maturity date in October of 2029. And you can see the full debt service repayment, including both principal and interest and the corresponding subsidy that is received through the life of that loan in the table to the bottom right. And then next, the district's 2014 certificates of participation. And as mentioned previously, certificates of participation are widely used throughout the state as an alternative form of financing, allowing issuers to generate funds for capital facility projects. It, it does take the form of a lease financing structure, which for public agencies without voter approved debt, that's kind of the traditional form. You put up a site lease and then you actually temporarily assign that site that's pledged to generally a nonprofit. And then the district will make its lease payments to this nonprofit over the life of the loan. And then at the end of the loan, the district then, you know, is reassigned the property. Very traditional structure. And in fact, in the appendix of this presentation, there's a flow chart and even more detail for those that are interested in learning more about certificates of participation. So in December of 2014, the district sold just over $6 million, which were utilized to finance solar energy projects and conservation energy projects throughout the district. There is currently 5.15 million of principal balance outstanding. And you can see in the table, the full debt service schedule, including both principal and interest over the life of that particular loan. And then lastly, the 2017 certificates of participation issued as a refinancing of the original bond sold in 2007. The paramount or principal balance of COP sold was 63.805 million, sold in June of 2017 to currently refund those 2007 certificates of participation. In this particular case, there is an agreement with the city that actually splits the repayment with the school district, with the city's portion taking on just under 20%, specifically 19.76% of the annual payments with Washington Unified covering the balance. In the table below, going from left to right, we provide the full debt service repayment schedule over the life of this particular loan, including both principal and interest and total debt service. And then moving to the right of the table, you can see the city's portion and Washington Unified's portion of that particular loan structure. And then Monique and the district staff did a wonderful job, really kind of piecing together the storyline associated with where these funds were directed as the district contemplated and ultimately initiated these financing efforts over time. And just as a brief recap of what information we were able to gather, the 2007 COPs that were initially sold were directed towards improvements at River City High School. And again, those 2017s just refinanced the 2007 COPs. The 2010 qualified school construction bonds were directed towards energy efficiency projects, including lighting and HVAC upgrades, thermal solar for River City High School's pool. The 2012 clean renewable energy bonds funded solar projects at Bridgeway, Southgate, Riverbank, River City, Westmore Oak Elementary, and
Westport.
And then the 2014 COPs funded solar projects at Bright, Elkhorn, Westfield, Yellow Education Center, Washington Middle, College High School, and at the district office. And you can see a variety of pictures that were pulled together, corresponding to some of those projects. And so in summary, the information that we wanted to bring forth tonight at the meeting and share publicly with the community really focuses on answering the question of what outstanding debt the district has, which currently in the current fiscal year, has an outstanding balance for non-voter approved debt of 63 point, or 63,660,563. And again, deducting out the amount of the 2010 qualified school construction bonds that have a set aside account of 7.22 million, the net balance is roughly 56 million, just over 56 million. Corresponding to that outstanding balance, in the current fiscal year, the district's annual debt obligation for non-voter approved debt totals $5,214,289. And for these payments, and I've talked with Monique at length, as well as district staff, right now, the district is utilizing a combination of developer fee revenue and redevelopment pass-through revenues, which are both facility-specific revenues that the district receives. Those are not dollars that would be available for salaries and benefits and operational costs, but specific facilities. Those are the revenues that are pledged to these COPs and non-voter approved debt payments. And then the other notable thing that I wanted to share with the board, similar to the 2007 bonds that were refinanced, the 2014 COPs are coming up on their call date in December of this year. And so depending on the market conditions at that time, there may be an opportunity to refinance those bonds for the remainder of their life at a lower interest cost. There is anticipated to be some Fed rate cuts at some point this year. And so I think the expectation is that we will see rates start to drop back down to levels that we were able to realize in 2020 and 2021. And so if that proves to be true, there, there could be an opportunity to save some interest cost there, which would be a direct net savings for the district's revenues that are being pledged to these debts. And so we'll work closely with Monique and the district staff and provide a report back to the board, to the extent that there's an opportunity. And that concludes the report. Happy to answer.
Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have received two public comment requests for this item. The first request is from Pat Flint and then Danny Langford.
Thank you for bringing this to us tonight. I appreciate the information. You should be worried about the general fund because if this other funding for some reason goes away or the state says you can't use the money that way anymore, it's going to have to come from your general fund. And as you know, the general fund funds mainly salary and benefits. There's very little left for anything else. My main question is, on the lease leaseback, are these properties held as collateral? Because we're paying, or my assumption is, we're paying the interest, the principal, and then we're paying somebody that we're lease leasebacking from. Am I correct in that assumption? And who is this person? Unless, I think I heard you say Chase Morgan is the owner of these leases. So until the COP is paid off, the district does not own these schools, from the way I understand it. All of these COPs are backed by the general fund, not these other funds. So, many of our, I want to know which properties are on the lease leaseback. I'm assuming the high school, Stonegate. Are there any other properties that are being lease leasebacked? We paid for the River City land, so therefore the leaseback is only for the building, is my understanding. And again, thank you for this presentation. I still have a lot of questions. It's still unclear to the public why we had to do this. And you as a board didn't do this. It was previous boards, I understand that. But when it comes to refinancing, be very careful. Because my other question is, and, and I heard this gentleman just say that the remainder of what's owed on these COPs is what will be refinanced. Now, will it be refinanced for 10, 20, you know, 50 years? What would be the lifespan of that? Because if it's including the, say, for instance, the 10 years that we've owed already paid on it, and you refinance for another 30 years, we're double paying. And so be very careful on how you use our tax money because ultimately, school funding is taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
So I have some things that I'm questioning on this. Why aren't we including interest projections on both the bond, the GO bonds and the COP totals? Because it doesn't look like that to me in the total amounts that the gentleman gave and that's in the presentation. It looks to be about $10 million less than what it would actually be, and that's a concern. How can we refund or refinance the 2014 bond when the call date on, like it says on page 40, when the call date on whatever page that it was originally on calls for it to be due in 2039? We've already refinanced that, from what I understand. I don't understand that. And why do we need to refinance it? Do we not have the money to pay it? That was on page one as well. For transparency, I'd like to see it in writing and accounting of the 7.22 million of the sinking fund. I'd like to see the accounting of that. On page 39, the 2007 slash 2017 was not improvements for River City High School. I want to be very clear. I was here at every meeting for five straight years that had anything to do with the school district at the time. And that was for the K8 program. That's why Bridgway was originally put up for that because the K8 bond did not pass. This community did not support it, but our district, which I realize you guys weren't here at the time. That's why I'm trying to give you the education on it. It was ridiculous. We were promised three K8s. We went all the way across the wall. That's why that was Bridgway originally. It was not for improvements at River City. It did help with some of the overrun of the ridiculous amount River City costs, but that's a whole nother issue. So that is incorrect. And I am concerned and bothered because we pay staff a lot of money. Why do we have errors in these presentations? Southport is not South Point, and the other one is what, Stonegate, not Southgate. There's a few, those are just two things that I've seen in the presentation that was incorrect. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to the board for questions and comments. I'm going to start with Trustee Wong. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Next trustee, okay, Vennegus, no. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, go ahead.
All right. Thank you for this. I appreciate it. I have a few things. One would be, can you speak to, hmm, a separate presentation I know that we've had in the past talked about our solar and how our, what cost savings that we have from that solar? And so I'm not going to ask you all of those details right now, just given, I know you might not have it with you. But I think an important piece when we post this and that we can follow up with for our board. So if this is posted on the business services page, is also to have a piece about our solar savings. Because this is obviously a lot of money on here. And then what would be important to understand is how, how much cost savings is all of, are all of these solar projects giving us as we think about what debt we owe, I think is a helpful piece for follow-up for us. And then can you speak to refinancing? I think of, you know, when I refinanced my own home, we did that not to extend the loan, but just to save us money, to get a better interest rate. And I was on this board. Others were too, I believe, when we did our refinance with that mindset. So can you just speak to the refinance that was done here and the intent behind that?
Yeah, so, you know, with general obligation bond refinancing, it's actually, by statute, you cannot extend the debt. It, it has to be maintained within the exact same term as the original debt sold. So there's, that's the, the one key characteristic that is very dissimilar to a mortgage, because I think with a home mortgage, you, you have that option. With general obligation bonds, you, you do not. It's solely for the purpose of lowering the interest cost for purposes of generating taxpayer saving. With a COP, there is discretion there. I will say in most cases, when schools or public agencies are considering refinancing, it's based on the economics of keeping the exact same term, and again, just solely lowering the interest cost. For purposes of this presentation and the future consideration of a possible refinancing of the 2014 COPs, the economics that we would be presenting to district staff and ultimately the board would be based on a baseline scenario of the exact same term of repayment, simply identifying whether or not there's an opportunity to lower the interest cost of that loan for purposes of lowering the debt service, which could then translate to general fund saving.
Thank you. And I think about that with our bond refinancing as well. That was a big win to save taxpayer money because it's true that we consider this, us to be very prudent in our fiscal responsibility to make sure that we are not. We did not put ourselves in the place of all of this debt, many of these pieces, but that we are being prudent in terms of saving as much as we can, I think is really important. And then can you speak to one of the public comments about holding schools as collateral or speak to that piece in terms of the properties and how they're owned?
Yeah. And again, I think if, you know, this presentation, I understand, will be made public on the district website. And I think that there's two kind of more granular slides in the appendix that really focus on how a COP financing works. And the idea, so the lease leaseback idea is more of a construction terminology than it is a financing terminology. The lease structure of a financing really navigates the constructs of what a public agency, how they can actually issue debt as a nonprofit agency. And so the, the leased sites are assigned, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use them as collateralized. They're, they're assigned in order to provide a vehicle for which the lease payments can be made. That's the way I would describe it. And so we could probably spend a couple hours diving through the nitty gritty of the lease agreements and assignment agreements of the lease agreements and assignment agreements associated with those, which I'm happy to do either tonight or at a later time. But it's, I would say it's more mechanical in this case, very much differs from that of the construction terminology of a leaseback.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for this. I appreciate it. I think it's really easy to digest, to see these slides, and it's really important for our community to have it and have accurate information. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I have a couple of questions. Looking at the 2007 COPs at 4%, and then the refinancing, the 2.82, so we effectively saved 1.18%. Can you either tell me how much we saved by refinancing on an annual amount in dollar signs? Not 1.18. I want to know what the taxpayers were actually getting for that? Or just tell me what we were paying annually for the 2000 at 4% and what we're paying now, if you don't have that number, 2.8?
If we can provide that as a follow-up item, we'll pull the figures from the 2017, and there'll be a report that will show us the annual saves that were realized through that financing.
The number that I seem to remember was we were paying around $850,000 annually. So that's the reason why we did, we did refinance, because it was coming straight out of. The other question is, what happens? So we pay COPs out of, effectively like developers, correct?
And redevelopment pass.
And redevelopment pass, right, okay. So what happens when development stops?
When, when or if development stops, there might be a heavier lien on the redevelopment pass-through monies that the district receives. If the combination of those two revenue sources are insufficient to meet the annual debt service obligations of these combined obligations, therein lies an encroachment on the general fund, correct?
So effectively, we did have that period of time where development definitely stopped. And actually redevelopment stopped too. So we did not have either one of those two sources. And again, that was another item that led to the refinance. I just, I would like to have an understanding of what the dollar amount was for the saving that we saved.
I just jotted that down. And, you know, a lot of this was a bit of a homework assignment for me and my staff as well. A lot of these took place before we had the opportunity to work with the district. And so, but it's really on day one of starting to work with district staff as soon as we were hired, this non-voter approved debt was at the forefront of discussions. And certainly, the awareness, both at the district level and on the consulting side, you know, really paying close attention to what the longevity of repayment and the lifespan of those revenues are, what the debt obligations are. And so we've kind of pieced this puzzle together and feel like we have a even better awareness now than, you know, at least as a consulting firm than we did at the onset. And I think a lot of the questions that you're asking are the right ones. I think it magnifies the focus on trying to lower the debt service when the opportunity provides through a refinancing effort. I think it was nice to see that on a number of these obligations, they are reaching their sunset or horizon for repayment. All of these things will help. I know there was robust conversation through the Measure Z planning effort as it relates to the potential of utilizing even some of that monies towards repaying some of the general fund backed debt. And, you know, that's just such a tough conversation to have, right? With all of the needs within the district. So, you know, I'm so glad that the board and community, you know, kind of brought these questions and we were able to share a lot of this information. And maybe we make this a more regular thing just as we get through the, you know, the repayment schedules and things start falling off and things look a little bit lighter in terms of debt obligations on the general fund.
Please pass the information to me. And with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any? No, you're good. Does there any item be taken off of the consent agenda? No? Good, okay. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do you want to say it louder?
Move by Trustee Wong.
Second.
Second by Trustee Vinegas. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Trustee Vinegas.
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to action items. Approval of contract services with Warner, Warren Consulting Engineers for the topographical survey of Elkhorn Village Elementary School. Neeks to evolve.
Hello again. So we are here requesting your approval for an agreement with Warren Consulting Engineers for the Elkhorn Village Modernization Project for topographical surveys. Topographical surveys, that means looking in the ground, for lack of better words, to identify where the utilities or underground things are there. So when our architects are designing, they know what they're dealing with in order to do a good design. The cost of this contract would be $75,912 paid via the Measure Z.
Hey. There any questions or comments? Actually, public comment.
No public comments received?
Questions or comments from the board? No? All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
I second.
Second by Trustee Vinegas.
Sure, I don't know.
I was waiting for Jackie, I can see her.
Trustee Vinegas.
Aye.
There you go. I too vote aye. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Okay. And there we have it.
Thank you.
Moving on to number two. Approval of the memorandum of understanding with YMCA Superior of California, Autry Street Assistant Soup of Ed Services.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, staff. We come before you this evening requesting approval of the independent contractor agreement between our district and YMCA of Superior California for ELOP services for both Bridgeway Island and Southport, serving about 370 students across the two sites for the 23-24 school year for before and after school enrichment and care, paid for out of ELOP funds. And the fiscal impact is $1,350,000 for the district.
Okay. Public comment?
No public comments.
Board comment, questions? I do have a question, okay? So, one of the concerns that was brought up to me by a parent, actually, a couple of parents, at Bridgeway Island when I was there for a principal coffee, was that the YMCA is not qualified or capable of providing SDC ELOP programs during the summer or any sort of after-school programs during the summer times for kids in special day class. I am always afraid that we are not doing right for our kids in special ed. So what kind of services can we provide them? I don't necessarily, I don't want to approve something without having an understanding of what we're going to do in the future. You know, I'm sure we'll probably bring some other program along to hopefully provide a service during the summer for those children. But I know the YMCA is, their staff is just not capable of, you know, dealing with a child that has an elopement risk or dealing with, you know, children that have higher needs. So what are we going to do?
Thank you for your question, and good evening again. I want to start with saying that I am a mom of a special needs student. I don't talk about that a lot, but, so that is always on the back of my mind for all kids, and especially special needs kids. So when we provide services, whether it's the YMCA Champions or the City of West Sacramento, it's open to all kids. We never ever turn any students away. Now, and so they're, if, so all the programs are available to them, whether it's spring or summer or during the year. And I'll give you an example. This past summer, we had the Ninja Warrior program at Riverbank. We opened the program specifically for our ESY students for an hour and a half, and they all were able to come and do the activities with their teacher and their paraeducators. And it was great. And I was telling Ms. Streak that nine out of 10, I want to say 99% of our ESY students do get to participate in those enrichment activities. But we do have some that have difficulties. And if it becomes a safety issue to themselves, like you said, ELOP, you know, kids who might run into the parking lot, then that's when, it doesn't matter if they're in special ed or in regular ed. If it's a safety concern, then we have to not have them in program. But I do have a plan moving forward for this summer. And my plan is to open up a position, several positions, for our special ed paraeducators. And hopefully, we will have takers that would want to work over the summer. And that would really help us with those students that need that one-on-one attention. Even if they get to come two days a week to just take them and have them enjoy those enrichment programs, I think that would be amazing. My other thought, because I just had a meeting with our partners this morning, and they brought this up, that if we could partner up with our special ed department, our wonderful Carla here, and have them provide a training, a series of trainings to our YMCA and Champions and city staff just to get a little bit more on how to handle students that have needs.
Okay. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate the programs that our ESY students will be a part of. What about our SDC kids? You know, and after the school day ends, they can go to the YMCA for service. That option is not available. Even if we were to do SDC during the summer, as it currently stands, you're talking about, you're talking about providing services maybe twice a week or classes twice a week for, you know, potentially some SDC students. What about, you know, after those classes end, parents still may need to be working? And, you know, like YMCA is effectively a summer camp, right? They provide camp services that are educational, they're, you know, expanded enrichment. That's great. What are we capable of providing for our SDC kids?
I, go ahead. So, so like I said, the program is open to all our students. There's no, I don't even ask them if you're in SDC or not. And once they apply, they're in. And I have several emails from parents that ask, my student is, in fact, at Bridgeway in the SDC program. Are we allowed to be, can we be? It's always like, of course. We try everything that we can. And I, when I say we, I'm, you know, I mean the programs, to make sure that the student is successful in the program. I've seen staff hold students' hands and walk them around. Let's take a walk, you know? But like I said, we could give them some more support, maybe in the form of hiring our own paras, where they are used to these students and work with them already during the day, so they're familiar, you know, with their needs. I think that might help.
Just want to add that services that are provided, that are paid for using ELOP funds, we have to offer the service to all students. There's a portion of the contract that we're asking you to approve that explicitly states that this vendor has to cooperate with our special services department to do just that, to make sure that access is provided for all students.
Okay. So both of the parents I spoke with said that last year they were told point-blank no by YMCA. So I want to make sure that either I'm not hearing it correctly here or I'm not hearing it correctly. So I just want to be clear, okay?
I thank you for that, and we will be sure to look into that and make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any further comments or questions?
I move.
There you go.
Moved by Trustee Wong.
Thank you for your questions, and I will second.
And seconded by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Trustee Wong. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
I too vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Vinegas. All right. Let's see, that is P2. We're going to P3. Is effectively the same, as I understand, for Champion. So approval of the memorandum of understanding with KCE Champions. My question, I'm just going to suggest that presentation be substituted for that, as I think it is. My questions hold true to Champion. Public comment, Mario? Any other questions? Board?
I move if there are no questions.
Okay. Moved by Clerk Vinegas. Seconded by Trustee Wong. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Trustee Vinegas.
Aye.
Thank you.
And number four. Approval of out-of-state travel to the Society for Pediatric Nurses, 34th Annual Annual Conference in Phoenix, Arizona, April 17th through the 19th, Autry Street Assistant Soup for Ed.
Yes, good evening again. I'm joined by Director Carla Salvo. And we are standing before you this evening requesting approval for one of our credentialed school nurses to attend an out-of-state professional learning opportunity, the Society of Pediatric Nurses in Phoenix, Arizona, in April for three days. And the financial impact is $1,511 for this one nurse to attend.
Okay, is there any public comment? Is there any board questions or comments? I only have one question. And as I look at this, it says $1,500 and change for the fiscal impact. Which fund is it from? And with that, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Seconded by Trustee Wong. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Trustee Vinegas.
Aye.
All right. You have approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Board governance, there is none? Okay. Board and superintendent comments. Superintendent Hildre.
Thank you, Vice President Hazadi and board members. Good evening to you.
Thank you, Vice President Pazadi and board members. Good evening to colleagues, the board community. I just want to begin and saying, always starting with gratitude for the work that is happening in our district over the past few weeks. I've had the privilege of visiting several campuses and observing classroom instruction and seeing how professional practices really serve as a foundation and the cornerstone for the effective instruction in our schools. And I remember a phrase in our strategic plan that focuses on the fact that it's the practices that endure and how important it is for professional growth and time for collaboration for our staff. And speaking of collaboration, we look forward to next week where we have a full day of professional learning for all of our certificated and classified staff. And the willingness to spend that time collaborating is what continues to make our district grow and, and strengthen across the board. So I want to thank our W S T A, C S E A partners, our administrators, and everyone who helps to support all the work that we do for our, our students and, and families. I also want to share good news that Washington Middle College High School received news this week from the Accrediting Commission for Schools, the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, also known as WASC. Washington Middle College was granted a six-year accreditation status through June 30th of 2030. So congratulations to the administrator, the faculty, the staff, the students, because we all know WASC is about a school community. So congratulations. And this highlights that all three of our W U S D high schools hold a six-year accreditation. And this speaks to the building blocks we're putting in place in our schools to reinforce instructional practices and elevate our organizational standards. So congratulations to the Washington Middle College team. We heard some comments about athletics, so here's some celebrations. So I want to send out a big shout out to River City High School Girls Varsity Soccer Team for winning the league title this week in a dominant performance against McClatchy High School, capping off an amazing season. I also want to congratulate the River City High School JV Girls Team who went undefeated in league play in this season. We celebrate the River City High School Boys and Girls Wrestling Team's recent tournament performances. They hosted a league tournament on campus, taking first place and advancing 13 wrestlers to the divisional round this weekend. So good luck to everyone and congratulations to all the students and their coaches and support staff working hard behind the scenes to support our student scholar athletes. Also at River City this past weekend at the Linea High School Theater Festival, River City High School Productions brought home several awards, bringing this troops total after-school hours to 6,744. Additionally, this past weekend at the California All-State Music Education Conference, our River City High School musician Robbie Uno performed with the California All-State Honor Band in the Golden State Band. Robbie has the distinct honor of being the very first River City musician to perform in the highest level honor band in the state. So let's give Robbie a round of applause. And say, when, when can Robbie capture what time to watch this part of the video to know that Robbie is being acknowledged? Some announcements and celebrations for February. Things that we just want to highlight, it's Career Technical Education Month. And so C T E programs across the country provide an opportunity for our students to demonstrate how C T E makes them college and career ready. February is also Financial Aid Awareness Month, which is focused on providing crucial information to students and families across about access to federal, state, and institutional student aid. This week, we celebrate National School Counseling Week, which is celebrated February 5th through 9th in recognition of our superstar W U S D school counselors, whose tireless efforts in schools make a unique contribution and have a lasting impact on our students' success. And finally, we acknowledge that February is Black History Month and it's the time when we get to acknowledge and celebrate the rich history, the struggles and contributions of African-Americans in communities across the nation and globally. So thank you for all of our schools who are having activities to make sure that our students are aware of the history of Black Americans in this country. And that concludes my comments for this evening. So I'm going to turn it back over to Vice President Pazadi. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Trustee Wong?
Well, it's awkward from behind the day if you're just hearing my, my voice. I, I won't, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to let the.
You can do a quick wave. Here you go.
Just kind of making note that when we teleconference, and I know this will be in a couple of cases for other people, we do consult with legal counsel to make sure that we adhere to the law. With that said, I, I'll keep it brief because yes, the voice from beyond is probably really awkward. And again, we do not do things that are foul to the law and always consult with our legal counsel when we do.
All right, trustee Vanegas.
Yes, let me just start off with just thanking everybody for, you know, a great start to this calendar year because we're midway through, I think almost towards the, yeah, midway through. I, I do just want to mention and thank the board for, for holding it down. You know, there's been a lot of requests across the state and demand from the Latino Hispanic community for parent involvement. And that happens right around 5:30 to 6:30 and just been, been called to serve these families and, and just really learning best practices and bringing that over to the board. And thank you, Dr. Hildreth, for just continuing to, to support that movement. And, and we're, we're looking for answers, you know, across the state. And it's been, it's been just, it's been great seeing so many families show up and, and we're looking for best practices ultimately. The other, I was able to go visit Chavez, the Chavez School over in Yolo County, Y C O E. Just got to spend time with some students and then hear their concerns, hear their voice. Some of them, it was with Ms. Principal Jared Coughlin, who was here. So it was nice to catch up with him as well. And he said hello to you all. And then we also, I also was invited by, on Saturday, some of our Yolo High students are going to be receiving some academic awards on downtown from our partnership with Miracle University. Yeah, so I'm going to go and I'll take pictures and I'll share those. I'm glad I'm home to be able to go see that. And that's just it. Just thank you all for doing the work. Thank you all for staying in it. And thank you all for your contributions. That's it.
Thank you. And clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
This is, this is, we had our curriculum council meeting, but I won't share because it, I already got to share a little bit earlier because they both came up for public hearing. But great presentations and well done by all of those on the curriculum council. I also spent last weekend, it was shared tonight about the Crest West. And Bridgeway Island represented really well. This is, a lot of Elk Grove schools, they sort of take the lead in doing Crest, which is for our younger kids in STEM areas. And it's one of those programs that we have had at other schools, but it really is dependent on teachers who are willing to give all of their extra time to make it happen. And so it's a wonderful organization. Our teachers are incredible that run it. And it would be great to have that expanded. But I also know we have folks with a lot on their shoulders and it's, it needs to be a personal passion to make that happen. But a huge thanks to the teachers that ran that. It was a really special weekend with all of our kids engaged and excited about science technology. I want to thank the district for touching base, going to Yolo High School to look at ADA pieces and how we can make sure that it is a good space for staff, kids, and families. And so thank you for that. And I also, tonight we approved parent representation for our S L P A. And I think what would be wonderful is if we can look at a celebration at the end, as we get to the end of the year, since you're starting to plan meetings now, that we celebrate those families as well as our families who are on site council. Many of these are not glamorous positions, but they're really, really important to the work of the district. And so I think it would be wonderful to have a way to bring our families in here and recognize them for that work that they do in our district. And with that, as we think about our employee of the year nominations, I want to make sure that we have our volunteer of the year as well. So we can honor our volunteer, whoever that may be. There's so many in, in our district. We're so lucky for that. I also wanted to thank the conversation about cellphone policy. And I think that that would probably be a really good thing to bring to our policy committee. I personally, not speaking of Washington Unified, I haven't seen, but I'm, on my visits, I'm not seeing a huge issue with it, but that's different than people who are here every day. But where I am every day, I see it as a really big detriment, cell phones. And for all the reasons that were mentioned in terms of, you know, phones out during the day causing a lot, a lot of stress on our kids. And I can't tell you how many kids have come up crying because somebody posted something about it, they knew it during the day. And we just, the more we can get those out and away, I think the better. So I think that's a great idea to revisit our cellphone policy. I also wanted to bring up the piece here in terms of our next city two-by-two. I think it's been discussed in the past, but I think we should have maybe ongoing conversations or keep it on another two-by-two about the idea of their low-income housing, which even low-income housing is not always low-income. It's quite expensive. But as we think about our own employees, if there's ways that we can partner with the city as other cities and school districts do, to say, when you put in low-income housing, can we look at having some of that prior, your priority list? Can that also be our classified employees and our certificated employees? Because we have many who I think meet a threshold and it is hard. It's a big challenge to be new to your career and trying to afford all of the things going on. So I'd like to have that on a two-by-two coming up. And I think that that's it for me in those pieces. Thank you. Oh, I would like an update too, at some point on the comments that were made this evening about leadership roles and athletic directors. I had thought that those were separate pieces. So if we can just have an update on that, that would be.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to supervisor Oscar Vegas. He passed on a grant opportunity called the California Gear Up Grant. It's the California Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Program. Grant opportunity which I passed on to superintendent Hildreth. So I wanted to say thank you to him for that, for making me aware and passing that along. Secondarily, I wanted to piggyback on what superintendent, superintendent Hildreth said about our wrestling program and our team. Thirteen out of 14 boys have moved on to regionals. At that city meet, or city meet, at that, now I'm blanking on what it's called, league meet, we had five out of our 13 take first place. And two take second place and one, two take third. So you, you have to place in the top four in order to move on. And we are looking very good to have many of our, many of our wrestlers move on and punch their ticket to the state meet in February. So congratulations to them and to the leadership of the coaches that they have instilled in our boys and girls on the wrestling. So, let's see, is there anything else that I had? Oh, yeah, I, I was fortunate enough to attend another principal coffee where we went over the CASP dashboard and we kind of went over in detail about some of the issues at Bridgeway Island that where are areas of strength and where are areas that need improvement. And the one area that, it breaks my heart, but every single area was in, or every single subgroup was in the red on was students with disability. And I guess it hurts my heart to, to know that they, that it's a struggle. And I know it's a struggle statewide. I know that we dramatically underfund our students with disabilities. And this is not a comment on anybody or what we're doing as a district for them. It's, I hope that we can advocate for more funding for students with disabilities. So we can provide greater services, so we can hire more staff to help those students that need additional support. And it's just something that I, I can't stand seeing time and time again. And I, you know, since we've been on this board and see this every time it pops up. You know, it, it's something that just, it's hard to, it's hard to stomach. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. Hopefully, we will be advocating via C S B A, via any other means possible, since we live so close to the Capitol, even though we're in a $58 billion budget deficit. You know, I, I hope we can at least advocate for a greater funding for students with. With that, we shall move on to future board agenda items.
Vice President Pazadi, one thing I could.
Yep.
That I got to mention as a thank you to the board for approving the Wonder Valley trip, which was for the eighth graders that we saw in the student board members report. Every school gave a shout out, but one principal wanted to share some comments. So I want to make sure that you all know the impact that that had on our eighth grade students who are the ones who missed the Sly Park trip due to the pandemic. So the comment is, I don't know who to thank for the opportunity that was given to our eighth graders, the field trip to Wonder Valley. But whoever it was, thank you, all caps. Comments from students? This is the first time I have ever roasted a marshmallow. I've never been so warm in a bed at night. I was able to sleep all night without having to get up to take care of my baby brother. I've never eaten this well. I am so happy I got to eat more than once each day. I feel like I can breathe. These were comments from our students. And from our teachers, they shared that every single one of our students was on their very best behavior. There were zero behavior issues. Our students grew, thrived, and united because it was eighth graders from across schools, which is such a good way to help them have community and friends when they go to River City or Yolo or Washington Middle College. The students encouraged each other and supported each other through some of the more difficult challenges. When the students from other sites were being disrespectful and wanting to start issues, our students did not engage and remove themselves from the incident. Our students were helpful and respectful to all, not just staff. Our chaperones were amazing. We are so grateful for this experience. And lastly, our kids got to experience things for the first time and it was amazing to see the joy in their faces. So that is, that is impact. And we sometimes don't even realize what we think is, you know, it'll be a good experience that when kids are talking about they don't have a warm bed to sleep and we are able to provide that for them through this experience. I just could not let this meeting end without sharing that with you. So, so thank you for approving that. Thank you to all of our eighth grade teachers and. Thank you to all of our eighth grade teachers and parents who were chaperones for. Our administrators who got that going in a very short window of time, but it really made the impact on our students. And I know this will be a memory they will, they will have forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Hildreth, and thank you to those in leadership who sought out this site. And were able to select it, bring it for the board to approve it. So I do appreciate that. It's great that our kids had the opportunity to do something when Sly Park was closed. We really appreciate it. Future board agenda items. Number one is a Board of Education study session on instruction confirmed for February twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Second interim budget report, March twenty-four. Board governance training to be determined. Is there anything to be added to? Trustee Wong.
Yeah, on that note, if possible, I would like an update on the early learning and opportunity programs. The trip to the Wonder Camp made me think about things that we need to think about in advance. Of the money that we're receiving so that we're not last minute scrambling for portables, for example, but really just thinking about programming and opportunities for our kids in the future.
Okay. That will go on to future board agenda items. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
I'll just reiterate, I sort of jumped ahead earlier in my comments, so that we can get on a two by two discussion. Again, about especially their future builds with low-income housing conversations with our staff. This would be policy committee, but the cellphone piece as well. And and then just calling out that we do have our budget report on a regular scheduled board meeting in March as well, and that. No discussions of, as was made, no discussions that were made in our meeting, and that those would all be done very well. And we would prefer not to have board meetings to cellphone lights. It's not ideal without power. So those are.
All right. Gosh, given that trustee Wong is on teleconference, I think we actually do need a motion to adjourn. Is that correct? No?
If we've dispensed, if we've dispensed with the agenda.
Yeah, we've. We've dispensed with the agenda, therefore the meeting is adjourned.